Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and councillors. Before we get into the meat of the meeting, I'd just remind you of the fire regulations. There isn't a planned fire alarm test this evening, so if the fire alarm goes off, please leave by one of the three exits, one, two, and three. Don't use the lifts when we assemble across the road, but the details are on the screen in front of you. Can I ask you all please to turn your telephones off, or to silent anyway? This is a public meeting, or it's a meeting in public, it is not a public meeting, let me make that quite clear. Therefore, I would ask you to understand that we would... Please be respectful to the people around you, and refrain from any booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. Tonight's application is a public speaking item, and those of you nominated to speak in support or object will be given five minutes each to do so after the planning officer's presentation. So, moving on to the main business. Item number one: The minutes have been laid on table for more than thirty minutes of our meeting on the seventeenth of August. Is it your wish I sign them as a true record?
Thank you.
Item two, apologies for absence. Emma?
We have apologies from councillors James Wheatley and Williamson, and councillors Lee and Fraser who are in attendance as substitutes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Disclosure of interest?
Number four, the meeting chairman.
Councilwoman Frost.
My usual disclosure, I'm a member of Farnham Town Council. I have seen this application, but I'm coming to this fresh in view of the officer's report.
Thank you very much indeed. Four, questions by members of the public. Is Mr Beaman present? I'll bring you the microphone, sir.
Thank you very much. It's normally my practice to have the questions being as read, but for tonight's question is a short factual question, which I will read out because I think the answer to it will be helpful to councillors in making their decision. The question is, with regard to planning application WA 2015 1146, which I understand is being discussed tonight, could you please advise us to what point in the town centre the distance of approximately 260 metres from the memorial hall as stated in the supporting design and access statement is measured? I'm not expecting a long answer.
Thank you, Mr Beaman. The answer to your question is at the top of page fifteen, and what we're talking about really is the town centre, which is an area, not a point in space. I mean, the town centre goes from Farnham Park to the railway station, to the hospital in the east, out nearly to the memorial hall, so it's right at the top of page fifteen. Thank you. Right, we'll now move on to the meat of the matter, the planning application. WA 2015 oblique 1146, application under regulation three for alterations and extensions to an existing multi-use community facility to provide additional community services at Memorial Hall, Babs Mead Farnham, GU97DX, amended by plans received on the twenty-fourth of July 2015. Matthew Evans to start.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few words of introduction before I pass over to Tim Bryson, who will take you through the plans and the details behind it. It is worth highlighting that the proposal for the memorial hall has implications for the council on a number of fronts. Firstly, as landowner, the site is owned by Waverley Borough Council. Secondly, as a provider of services to the community, in this case, the driver behind the application is the council's desire to provide enhanced facilities to the residents of Farnham. And thirdly, as planning authority, to determine an application for extensions and alterations to an existing community building. Now, it is that latter role, that planning role, which is the purpose of tonight's committee meeting, and your job tonight as members of the joint planning committee is to consider the planning application before you. The judgment for you tonight is to assess it against the relevant policy tests, and to that extent, it's no different from any other planning application which comes before you. We recognise that there are a number of issues which have been raised around funding and the detailed needs of future users. Those aren't relevant to you tonight in your assessment of the planning application. However, in the report, we've recognised that some additional information might be helpful, and also the update report, we've sought to provide the wider context. Finally, just to remind members that the established use of the site is for community purposes. The proposal does not change that use. It is an extension to an existing community use, and so is acceptable in principle, albeit that there are planning judgments for you to be made around matters such as the design and the residential impact, and Tim will explain what the matters of judgment are for you tonight. So I think at that point, I'll pass over to Tim, who will take you through the plans in a normal way, and also take you through the update sheet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Tim Bryson.
Thank you, Chairman. So, members, starting off with the site location outline here in red. Site is located on the, as you said, the western side of Farnham Town. Currently contains a detached building, as Matthew outlined, in community use. Access to the site is currently off Crosby Way here, in the south corner. You have West Street to the north running up there. This is aerial photograph of the site. You can see here the access and current car parking. Currently, the site does have an internal one-way system, as you come in going left round the site like that. In terms of the surrounding uses of the site, you have residential here, you have modern office development opposite, and residential to the south, and the Farnham Town Football Club to the east. Here is a 3D aerial photograph looking southeast, looking at the front of the building here. This is really just quite useful to capture some of the, you could say, the roof scape of some of the surrounding area and the site. You'll note here, you can see the large flat roof at the front of the building, a single story, and the large single ridge structure to the main part of the building. So the proposal, the proposal is for a two-story rear extension, and alterations to the front to provide new roof structures over the existing front flat roof section, and alterations to the car parking and landscaping. The two-story rear extension would go, extend beyond the north elevation and the south elevation. You can see the ridge line here of the proposed rear extension. The proposed new roofs to the front flat roof sections are here, here, and here. The proposed car parking would largely reflect similar layout to the existing. The front parking would be moved forward, there would be some further spread of parking toward the east, and they would total to provide fifty-seven spaces, including four disabled and two minibus spaces. In terms of the movement of vehicle through the site, that is proposed to change. As you enter the site, it is proposed that you would come through here, round here, and here. This area here is proposed to be a shared area for minibus and car drop-off pickup point, as well as pedestrianised. Some enhanced landscaping is proposed, particularly to the north of the site, where this is within the conservation area up here, and so really that helps to provide you with the context of the proposal. This is the proposed north elevation here and proposed west. The proposed north is the elevation that really is quite visible from West Street to the north. You can see here the new pitched roof at the front over the flat roof, and you can see here the rear extension at the back. The existing entrance to the building is proposed to be closed, and a new entrance created here, also on the north elevation. On the front, you can see here the new pitch roof structures here, and the rear extension extending beyond the north and south elevations here. I think, members, this is a good opportunity to talk about materials. We do have with us here a sample of materials board that's been submitted with the application. So if I could just touch upon the materials proposed, which Paul was kindly holding up for me. In terms of the external appearance, you'll note that there's a number of external cladding proposed. This is to be fibre cement panels, which you can see here, which is actually going to be in an off-white colour, which would match up with the existing appearance of the memorial hall, so it wouldn't be a white as actually shown on the drawings, but it would be an off-white like that. Also proposed is dark timber cladding here, here, and here, in between some of the panelling and below the windows. Also, at ground floor level, there would be dark blue brickwork, which is here, and that would be at ground floor, and the windows would be grey aluminium framed, which are also on there as well. So that helps provide a bit of assistance with the elevations here. In terms of the south and these elevations here, you'll see the south, you have the new pitch roof structure here, and the extension. On each side of the extension, they propose timber loups as well, and on the rear, you'll note that the ground level changes, running from north to south, which means that at the southern part, you have a three-story appearance of the building. In terms of the proposed ground floor, proposed plans, floor plans, a lower ground floor level in the southern part of the building is proposed to become storage. This is the proposed ground floor plan. You can see outline in yellow up there, that is the outline of the existing memorial hall. You will note that the proposed entrance would change, and it would look to come through into essentially the memorial hall. What is proposed is to have the option of bifold doors down here, which would provide options to either close off and have a smaller space to be used, as well as other services using the building elsewhere in the building, so it does allow that flexible use. In terms of facilities, what is proposed is kitchen and survey area here, and health and wellbeing function rooms down here and here. The proposed first floor, this would be, again, additional facilities such as offices here, meeting rooms here and here, carers' support here, and health and wellbeing room here, and also hairdressing here. There is also a very small outdoor terrace here, which does add a bit of outdoor space for users, should they wish to use it. And the roof plan, what's outlined here, it's a slightly different shade, that is proposed to be glazing, and then these sections is the fibre cement panelling. So the glazing here is to be a vaulted ceiling internally, which will provide natural light to the memorial, to the main hall at ground floor level. I do have a 3D visual aid further in presentation showing that. Some proposed section plans, which really does help, this is from, looking from the rear, this one down here really does help show where the extension would actually extend off at, just underneath the existing rear first floor windows, and over here, the existing internal staircase proposed, and again here, just showing the level of accommodation from the rear. This is looking through the north elevation. You'll note here, you'll see the design on purpose to have a slight overhang, just to add visual interest to that rear elevation, and you'll see through here, the rear terracing and staircase as well. So some 3D visual aids have been submitted with the application. This is showing the north elevation where the main entrance point to the building would be. You'll note here the glazed canopy, which provides a porch entrance to the users. And again, from the south elevation in the corner, really showing that, helping put into context. And this, as mentioned earlier, the purposeful design on purpose to undercut the first floor windows with glazing to provide that natural light to the memorial hall. So, members, through some site photographs now, this is looking at the existing north elevation. You'll note here the existing flat roof, single-story structures of the main part of the building, the new roof structures going to the front, and the rear would be demolished and replaced with the two-story rear extension. This is looking south across the front elevation of the building. You'll note the arrow there showing the current route through the site, that would alter. And the rear elevation there. You should note that the ridge height of the proposed rear extension would not be higher than the existing, and the furthest point back at the moment is this section. In terms of a footprint, the rear building line would come 2.5 metres beyond there, so that gives you, helps you give an idea of the depth. And this is the existing rear car parking at the moment. Some of this would be moved around further north into the site, and you can see the town football club beyond. This is the nearest neighbouring properties that are joining the site to the north. You'll note the window spacing into the site there. And again, the existing entrance and neighbouring properties there on Babs Mead to the right. You know, the existing parking is there already. What is proposed is for the parking to turn around and have three in tandem, rather than as proposed there. And again, a view from Crosby Way looking north at the site. So, members, in terms of the key determining issues with this application, you notice on the left, the matters of principle and technical opinion. In terms of matters of judgment, the site is within a developed area of Farnham, wherein the principle of extensions to the building could be acceptable. The visual impact and design, one of the key judgments for you this evening, the proposal is for a contemporary-looking addition to an old building. Officers consider it to be a good design, and it would actually enhance the site and surrounding area. Taking into account the spaces retained on the site, we are happy that there would not be material harm to residential amenity or surrounding designated heritage assets. So, members, if I could now turn your attention to the update sheet. You'll note the additional letters of representation that we have received, and summaries of them. Following the site visit, and a number of queries raised by members on the site visit, the applicant has provided some additional points to help clarify matters there. And you'll note officers' further comments in response to those matters raised by third parties and the applicant there. So, Chairman, in conclusion, officers remain satisfied with proposal and recommend permission be granted, as on the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Tim. Now we return to public speaking, we have five minutes for each. Mrs Hess.
Good evening. My name is Yolande Hess, and I'm one of the founding partners of Back to Front Exterior Design. Can I just check that you can hear me? Can you hear me now? Right, well, I'm one of the founding partners of Back to Front Exterior Design, and I don't know if you know what we do, but we specialise in ugly buildings. Mostly, these are residential, but one or two commercial buildings. Over the last sixteen years, I've worked on over five hundred and fifty buildings. I do have a lot of experience with ugly buildings and what tends to make them ugly. All of them start out usually with good intentions, but most of them didn't start out too ugly, but with subsequent and ill-thought-through extensions and additions and alterations become a mishmash of style, deeply unsatisfying and undesirable. The memorial hall is very like this. I have no commercial interest in this project, or I'm making this objection. I've read the planning officer's report to you, all thirty-six pages of it. Essentially, it boils down to the fact that in his opinion or judgment, he thinks the design of the proposed extension to the hall is a good design and acceptable, and that all located services and existing services are accommodated. I was very interested in his report to you just now, he kept referring to the extension as a rear extension. The building clearly on the north is the front extension, and even the new entrance is on the front, and by Waverley Plan, or Waverley Borough Council's definition, a principal elevation is the one where the front door is. So how could this be a rear extension when it's actually on the side? Others and I do not agree with this extension and being a good design. Jay Hyman's letter and other objectors have laid out to you very clearly their very real problems with this application. I don't have time to repeat these objections now, but I do hope you have read some of the letters. Instead, I would like to turn to the planning officer's opinion that this is an acceptable design. The hall is a double-ended gable building, flanked by two less-than-desirable flat-roofed extensions either side of the front gable, creating a symmetrical geometric imbalance. Balance is one of the essential ingredients in harmonious architecture, so when we look at a building, it resonates in us and we find it satisfying. It is possible to create asymmetrical balance, however, in this instance, two gable buildings standing side by side, one in front of the other, one's seen better days and already confused architecturally, and the other built from modern materials, will not produce a harmony, rather the opposite. Any extensions to this building need to be on both sides, so that both east and west elevations can be addressed. Even with revised pitched roofs over the flat extensions on the west, they're not going to produce this harmony. I frequently find that more than fifty per cent of my clients find it very difficult to visualise what proposed alterations are going to look like, which is why we spend a lot of time with visualisation software to clearly show implications of what is being It worries me that as councillors, you have not been given enough visualisation information to make an informed judgement, especially from the south-west corner as you enter the site. That concept visual is missing from your documents. I hope you have had a chance to see the one that I locked up for you. Although the hall, as it stands today, is architecturally challenged, it does serve the purpose for which it was built. Apart from running and maintenance costs, it is not costing as much. It is not too expensive or precious for hirers, as they do not have to worry about robust users, for example, dancing, exercising, toddler activities, but to spend 2.2 million and have it made visually even more visually confusing hurts. Therefore, we should be careful about how we move forward with the hall. Unfortunately, previous administrations have not kept this building in as good a order as it could be with thoughtlessness of ad hoc extensions and utility items added, utility items added over the years, creating a visual confusion. I appreciate there are all sorts of reasons why we are here tonight considering this application, however, in our rush to alleviate the needs of New Daycare Centre, we are in danger of adding to this confusion, creating an architectural iso for this and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs Hess, turning now to Farnham Town Council, and councillor Jill Hargreaves.
Good evening, councillors. Farnham Town Council is very grateful for the opportunity to speak at this meeting tonight. The town council has no objections to the principle of extending the memorial hall, which will enable the dilapidated hall to have much-needed investment and a new lease of life. Farnham Town Council welcomes some of the changes that have appeared since the initial consultation, particularly in relation to the pitched roofs replacing the flat roofs. However, there remains a number of concerns over the scale, design, and accessibility. The town council maintains, as it always has, that the Gostrey Centre should remain in the town centre, the memorial hall is considered too far from the town centre amenities and public transport facilities, with existing bus stops too far from the memorial hall. Although not a planning consideration in itself, the Waverley Borough Council should negotiate a new bus stop closer to the memorial hall, and provide funding for accessible transport for the hall's users. The town council is concerned about whether the new facilities are able to meet the needs of its new users. In particular, the kitchen in the refurbished hall would not be sufficient to enable the meals-on-wheels service to continue to function as it does in the current Gostrey Centre, and no information has as yet been provided about this aspect. There remains a concern about whether these facilities are suitable when compared with similar types of community buildings in operation elsewhere. The memorial hall is at a key entrance point, and the new plans submitted raise concerns that the proposed design and bulk of the refurbished hall will be detrimental to the main entrance to the town, and should be reconsidered. If this application is refused, the town council would welcome the opportunity to work closer with the Borough Council in the formation of new plans to meet the needs of the Gostrey Centre and local residents. In conclusion, Farnham Town Council does not object to the application, but feels there is scope to improve the design and internal layout of the building. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hargreaves. Now we turn to John Cope and Darren Page, who've got five minutes, shared time.
Is that live? You can hear me, can you? Thank you. My name is John Cope, and I'm here as a representative and trustee of the Brightwell's Gostrey Daycare Centre in East Street, Farnham. We specialise in high-quality social activities and limited care support for older people from the Farnham area, so as to improve their quality of life and reduce social isolation. I've been asked to say a few brief words about the proposed relocation of the Gostrey to the memorial hall in West Street. As trustees, we have been consulted and kept well-informed by Waverley Borough Council about this move. We welcome this proposal, as it would end many years of uncertainty due to the delays in the Brightwell's East Street development, and it would give us the much-improved and larger premises we so urgently need. During the last ten years, our existing premises, which were built in the 1950s, have become increasingly in need of extensive repair and refurbishment work. We've reached a point where there are potentially several urgent health and safety concerns. The decor and general appearance is now shabby and rather unwelkings, not to mention the aging fixtures and fittings which regularly break down and... ageing fixtures and fittings which regularly break down and need replacing. We have an excellent manager and staff plus a pool of volunteers who do their very best to make the Gostrey a pleasant experience for the fifty or more clients who regularly visit us on a daily basis. Having a freshly-prepared two-course lunch, often followed by entertainment such as bingo, singing, music etc., we even have a trained nurse who looks after a dementia group. We collect and deliver back home a large proportion of our clients in our two buses, which are equipped with tail lifts for wheelchairs. Other clients arrive by car, driven by relatives, some walk, but this is only a small proportion of our visitors. We intend to run a shuttle service to and from the town centre for those who would like it. The extra dedicated parking and waiting area will make our lives much easier. A modern, bright, welcoming, attractive and comfortable premises would greatly enhance the appeal of the Gostrey Daycare Centre, a place none of us would mind leaving our aged relatives for a few hours of company and friendship. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
My name is Darren Page of Little Associates and we are the architects of the proposed redevelopment of Memorial Hall. The site was identified via a sequential test as an appropriate relocation for the Gostrey Centre services. The Memorial Hall already provided community facilities, albeit in a building with its own ongoing maintenance issues. Detailed briefs were taken from the Gostrey Centre trustees, Waverley Borough Council and existing Memorial Hall users in order to create one multi-purpose facility with built-in flexibility for the future. Pre-application discussions were entered into with your senior planning and urban design officers and through a collaborative approach, their comments were fully addressed, resulting in the application recommended for approval before you tonight. The vision for the scheme is very deliberate. The Memorial Hall is of important local interest and the double-height space is its strongest element, including the neoclassical frontage. The design concept is to retain the two-storey hall and introduce alongside a new similar-proportion sister volume, but in a contemporary style, providing a striking contrast between existing and proposed. The new volume extrudes at the front end to help contain a new public space and draw visitors to the entrance, located in the glazed spine which in turn is a clear distinction between old and new. Materials and their detailing have been carefully considered. The chosen cement panel system provides a contemporary reference to the original stonework and rendering of the hall. It is purposefully used as a wrap to accentuate the shape of the volume. The dark timber cladding, a common feature in Farnham, is used to provide relief and its vertical arrangement, together with the cement panel cladding, is a subtle reference to the columns of the existing hall. The new block is broken into two sections, using large areas of glazing with timber louvers and an inset balcony to reduce its visual impact. The mix of blue and red bricks hints at the old while bringing in the new and successfully grounds the building on the site with the lower under-story cut under the main volume further emphasising its form. Positioning the extension to the west of the Memorial Hall allows the existing building to still command the public views from West Street and Crosby Way. The appearance of the building is to be improved and includes new pitched roofs and the existing to the existing side extensions. The new building is only glimpsed as it serves to draw visitors to the entrance. Car parking on-site has been retained but rationalised to reduce the extent of tarmac and the introduction of different surfaces and attractive areas of landscape maintained and enhanced. In conclusion, I hope you share our enthusiasm for the exciting redevelopment of Memorial Hall and invite you to support your officer's recommendation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now turn to councillor Julia Potts. Four minutes for you.
Chairman, thank you. Members, you must determine this application on its planning merits. However, I did want to take this opportunity to clarify a number of matters raised in the last few days that whilst not direct planning matters, will I hope assist with some background to the context for debate this evening. The Memorial Hall is a Waverley-owned facility in Farnham and as you will know from the last full council meeting where additional funding for this project was agreed, the current hall itself is in need of significant investment, somewhere in the region of four hundred thousand pounds. The Gostrey Centre is in a similar situation. Waverley has an ageing population and we need to ensure a larger and more flexible facility that can be a real flagship centre of excellence, sorry, centre of health and wellbeing excellence for the longer term. There has been extensive consultation with the Gostrey trustees, as Mr Cope was saying, and they are keen to move to this facility. They see a real positive in having a centre which would offer varied use and social interaction with a varying number of groups. We are not proposing a day centre in the traditional terms. This is far more and caters for the needs of an ever-changing future, such as the vine at Woking. A number of updates have been submitted to the original plans, as has already been stated, and this is a result of additional feedback which has been incorporated from the Gostrey Centre, other stakeholders and meetings that have been held with neighbours. An all-member briefing was held at Farnham Town Council at which Farnham councillors of all tiers of the council gave their input and again, much of that has been incorporated into the plans before you tonight. The football club currently have their somewhat aged changing rooms housed in the semi-basement area of the hall. They're extremely supportive of this move. We're working closely to ensure they get these new facilities at their pavilion and temporary changing rooms are being provided to them during this period of rebuild of FA-compliant changing facilities. Parking is an important consideration and that has already been covered as Gostrey Centre clients do tend to come and go by minibus or car and taxi. An alteration has been made to the main glass canopy entrance to allow for them to alight from the rear of the vehicle if necessary and protect them from the weather. In terms of public transport, the local Surrey County councillor is working hard to ensure the bus stop is moved, as has already been mentioned, and the hopper service secured for all users of the hall. We want this hall to be a sustainable venue which is accessible by all in terms of both its internal flexibility to hireers and access by all transport means for the local community using it. If planning permission is granted this evening, the timetable aims the project's start pre-Christmas with a completion towards the end of twenty sixteen. Thank you, Chairman and members.
Thank you very much councillor Potts. Before we move to the general debate, I'd just like to thank all the councillors and officers for attending one of the wettest site visits I think I've ever been on, so I thank you for your tolerance on Monday. Members, open to you. Thank you. Councillor Blackdon.
As ward councillor for this particular area, I have to say that I welcome the fact that the Memorial Hall has been given a considerable boost and the increase in the number of facilities that will be available is a very good thing indeed. My one dislike about the whole system is that building that has been added to it, which as far as I'm concerned, is so different from the Memorial Hall's existing building as to be almost unsightly. And others will say, know that it's absolutely marvellous, but it would have been better if that were more, it was more sympathetic to the existing designs of the old Memorial Hall. Otherwise, it's the fact that it's being done is fine, it's just that I don't like what they're putting up as it's, it looks to me to be too cheap and cheerful. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Blackdon. Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I am delighted that we're actually producing in town a centre of excellence for health and wellbeing. This is something which has always been very dear to my heart and I had hoped we could have achieved it at what was the Gostrey, the residential home in the centre of town because for me, I would have preferred this in the centre of town. But I know we have been looking for somewhere where the Gostrey Centre might relocate over a number of years, so I'm delighted that the Gostrey Centre are happy with this relocation. Mention was made by councillor Potts about the bus service. As the county councillor mentioned by councillor Potts, can I just say that Stagecoach have confirmed that there are not enough bus stops in West Street at all and they will be working to make sure that we make the bus stops in, because this is going to be a community facility, not just a facility for the day centre. So that is ongoing and I'm in ongoing discussions about continuing the hopper service, which is very dear to the hearts of the people who live in that part of the town. We've already got sixty-five bus which is going to be continued because there was a lot of angst about that being stopped, but it is not now being stopped but will be reviewed again next year. And Farnham Town Council has been working with Alton Town Council and Hampshire to ensure this continues and we have assurance that the bus will continue to go down West Street. So that was a great issue with a lot of people, although not a planning matter because it doesn't come within the planning, but I thought people would like to know that. It's always difficult when you take an old building and you put a new modern extension on it. I can remember when the new very glass modern extension was put on the front of the maltings and there was a lot of angst about that. Old building, very modern front. It looks wonderful. So, you know, I'm trusting that the people who have done the drawings actually will make sure it doesn't hit you in the face, but it does look good and I'm delighted we've got the site there of the materials that are going to be used. Unless there's some tremendous thing that happens tonight, I will be supporting the application.
Thank councillor Frost. Councillor Cavan.
Yes, thank you Chairman. I think like many Farnham councillors tonight, I'm completely divided on this in my own mind. I honestly don't know what I think about it. I've worked closely with the Gostrey Centre, I was involved I think before Mr Cope as the town council rep and I've known Maggie Groves and the team for years and I fully understand why after twelve years of total neglect, they wish to move and I wouldn't want to do anything that would prevent that move. I think the Gostrey Centre has for so long just hidden its great work. I mean, the idea that what we're going to do on this site is vastly improved, it actually in terms of services, is not going to be hugely improved because the services that are actually offered in that inferior building are immense, absolutely immense. The care, the bathing, the care for the dementia, it is absolutely extraordinary, second to none at the moment and I would hate to do anything which would stop it moving into good premises. Having said that, I actually like a mix of old and new, but I think this is appalling. I really do think it's hideous. I actually liked the glass bit on the maltings, I like the pyramid at the Louvre. You know, I don't have a problem with old and new, but I do have a problem with materials and with bulk and mass and all the other things which I just think here are completely dwarf the original building. I'm not a great lover of the Memorial Hall any more than other people, but it sits in its plot and it serves its purpose and it doesn't offend. I just don't see this as being the building that is going to have that wow factor that really ought to go along with the wow factor of the services that are going to be provided inside. I know it's not just for the Gostrey Centre, but you know, as I say, obviously that's a key part of this, but for the other users as well. We're building a space here, as councillor Frost has just said, for the community. I don't know, I just look at that and I'm afraid I shudder, trying desperately hard to look at the materials over there and see it in the flesh as it were, but I just wish we had put, what we were looking at tonight was just something that was easier to love, put it that way, because I think the reasons for doing it and knowing that the Gostrey Centre is desperate to move, it is very, very hard to fight against that. But is this really the right thing for that entrance to Farnham? I really don't know yet.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm substituting tonight for councillor John Williams and I made notes of a discussion with him and I feel obliged first, if I may, to deal with some items of concern that he mentioned. His first concern is over the financial contribution of Chris Nicholson and I suspect that this would be ruled inadmissible. The director of finance confirmed to me that negotiations were still in hand and that I should leave it at that until the matter is brought before full council. Councillor Williamson's second concern is over the application of seven restricted-
Give me councillor Fraser.
Beg your pardon?
Could we stick to the planning matter in hand? We are discussing the planning application.
Am I not, am I not able to mention the covenants?
Carry on.
Thank you. It also might be seen as inadmissible, as you've said, and Mr Daniel Bainbridge, our barrister, warned me of that yesterday, but he did confirm that covenants do trump planning consents if in conflict with them. This proposal for an extension to Farnham's Memorial Hall is made necessary in order to accommodate the Gostrey Centre displacement from Cambridge Place by the Brightwells Development. There therefore can be no denying that this proposal is enabling works for Brightwells. It should therefore receive an environmental impact assessment-
Chairman, I'm so sorry to interrupt councillor Fraser, but the covenants will be a legal matter, it's not a planning matter and I don't know why we're discussing them.
Yes, I was just about to turn to our solicitor. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you councillor. Those matters aren't for the committee tonight, so if the balance-off in the presentation has to do with anything other than planning merits, then I'd suggest strongly that we ask councillor Fraser not to speak any further. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Fraser.
I have other planning matters further on, Mr Chairman.
Right. Can we stick to the planning application in hand?
Flood risk and drainage are summarised on pages twenty-five to twenty-seven, but impacts on public use of the hall, neighbours' amenities and the paucity of public transport, to name but three, are not assessed in any detail. As I understand it, the joint planning committee is not empowered to grant planning consent unless it has approved a full environmental statement for a project of some two million pounds value and yet the joint practice, the planning committee, does not have an environmental statement. The centre of Farnham, notionally at the Borough, is eight hundred metres distant from the Memorial Hall, which is much further than the three hundred metres from the existing Gostrey Centre. From July next year, there is very likely to be no public transport available at all west of the Borough. May I now address the plans themselves? Relocation of the football club, changing facilities to the eastern side of the pitch is mentioned but not described or drawn. The vital Meals on Wheels service has been entirely overlooked, it doesn't even get a mention in all the thirty-six pages of our agenda. It has been accepted that wider use of the Memorial Hall should not be restricted or its use limited for Farnham residents in general. The existing covenants preclude this, yet the intimate connection of the hall and-
Councillor Fraser, covenants are not part of the planning process.
I'm sorry I mentioned that. I'm sorry I mentioned that. I apologise. The intimate connection of the hall and the relocated centre does put limits on the use of the hall. The folding screen that separates them cannot be located upon the sprung floor of the hall or hung from the hall ceilings, it would be too heavy, particularly served to act as a sound barrier. Any reduction of the hall's width will be bitterly resented. The screen must be returned to its original location as I understand it- The screen must be returned to its original location, as I understand it, beneath the valley beam, which might further limit the space available. The kitchen, the survey and the dining areas are all woefully inadequate in size. I know the trustees have been involved, but have the staff been properly consulted concerning the space available? I think not. I see that assisted bathing is detached from the centre and marooned on the opposite side of the hall. I think this is untenable. Shared toilet facilities for elderly customers from the centre and young boisterous participants of sport activities from the hall will be unpopular to say the least. Noise transmission through the folding screen will cause disturbance and irritation. Heating and ventilation requirements for the hall on the one hand and the centre on the other are not compatible, but they are inseparable. Relocation of the toilets to an area previously demarcated for storage has effectively banished all the folding tables and chairs to a distant basement which is accessible only by two flights of stairs. Customer services and office spaces for staff and care team are undersized and inadequate. Have these teams been consulted? Have the drawings been explained to them? It appears upon close examination of the drawings at a reasonable scale that the drawing scale has been distorted to make suggested furnishings fit the rooms. I trust our vetting procedures are up to detecting any sharp practice in this regard. I'm tempted to recommend that this application be set aside pending a proper redesign of facilities accompanied by comprehensive studies, consultations and clarifications regarding legal matters, and yes, also regarding the funding. As it stands, the proposals conflict with the covenants we've mentioned, and the hall be primarily devoted to sports activities, physical exercise and cultural events, but grafting on a welfare facility of the nature intended brings both purposes into reconcilable conflict. I agree with other councillors that a town centre location should be sought fresh, and to that end I would suggest that Cobb Gates perhaps, or the Liberal Club in South Street, or even the Conservative Club in Ivy Lane might be considered as being appropriate. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Fraser, we are talking about the planning application in front of us, not other ideas. I have two officers who wish to speak, first of our legal representative.
Thank you, chairman. Just to reiterate what you've just said, I strongly advise members to disregard the comments about funding and covenants. Those are matters for the applicants only, and they're not matters that the committee can actually consider tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Sims.
Thank you, chairman. If I could just pick up on one or two other points which might help members in consideration of some of the things that have been raised. Firstly, in relation to environmental impact assessment, members will see in the report at page thirty, we have made reference to the environmental impact regulations, and we advise members that we do not think this development in isolation or in combination is EIA development, and that is an effective and appropriate screening of the development, and I think you can take comfort that you are compliant with the regulations in coming to that conclusion. Quite a lot was said about the internal arrangements of the way this building may operate. Members will be aware that very largely the internal functioning of a building is not essentially a planning matter. If there are operational changes to be made subsequently, that is a matter for the service provider and the end user, it is not something which would go to the heart of your assessment in planning terms. What you're looking at here is an application for an extension to an existing community building, and I think our report sets out quite clear what the actual planning matters are, and essentially, as Tim has gone through, you're looking at whether it fits appropriately onto the site in design terms, whether there's adequate parking provided, and whether it will affect amenity in the adjacent conservation area. And just one final word, in terms of consultation, as a planning application, the applicant is required to adhere to planning regulations in relation to consultation, and that consultation has been carried out in accordance with the statute, in accordance with the requirement to publicise the application in the appropriate way, and we're satisfied that adequate consultation has been carried out with appropriate parties. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Sims. Just to make a further point, the Gostrey management and trustees have been involved in this process from the very beginning. They are fully aware of what the building offers and have been involved, but they were also involved in choosing the architect. They also looked at other centres around our location, including the Viennin Woking and our own facilities. And if I just make the point again, that many of the people who go to the Gostrey Centre at the moment are travelling by hopper or by other coaches to the centre. If they come from the Bourne or from Upper Hale, they're not walking, they are moving a long way, in the same way that people from Godleming have to go quite some way to the centre in Elstead, in Milford, sorry. Cranley has also had its problems, I think as certain members will admit, with the redevelopment in Cranley, but the Gostrey management and trustees have been involved in this process from the very beginning. Members. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, chairman. When one looks at plans for a day centre, one's prime consideration is that this is a business proposition. Is the building fit for purpose? I am Wavely's representative on the board of the Clock House, the Milford and Villages Day Centre. The Clock House has a total membership of three hundred and fifteen people, paying an average of six pounds a year, membership of which a hundred and forty-nine of them are regular users. The centre provides activities such as bingo and chair-based exercises most days and between twenty-three and forty-nine lunches every day. The centre has a full-time manager, a full-time chef, four part-time drivers, two carers, two kitchen assistants, a part-time administrator and eighty volunteers. And, chairman, I'm just coming to my point.
Please do.
Yeah. Total running costs come to around two hundred and fifty thousand pounds. Total from legacies and donations, including Wavely's grant of forty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-five, comes to a hundred and sixty thousand pounds. A further forty-three thousand pounds-
Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes. Councillor Holder, can we talk about this planning application, please?
Right. And just coming to that, Jim. I'm comparing one day centre with another day centre, and I'm just making an inquiry about the layout of this day centre. Am I allowed to do that? It's an application that's got ground floor plans on it, can I not comment on the ground floor plans?
Well, do so, please.
Seventy thousand pounds is generated by food and the sales of outings and transport and income. The design of this building on page six does not seem viable. There is no need for two activity rooms, as only one activity is carried on at any one time, and a dining room with six tables is far too small to be let out for any large functions. It is impossible to move the stairs and say the alternative is to move the dining room and kitchen to the back of the building with a much larger dining area and lose an activity room in the front of the building. If you combine the two buildings together, Memorial Hall and the Gostrey Centre, if you're going to have a dinner dance there, the dining room is far too small for the people who are going to dance in the Memorial Hall. The dining room is not fit for purpose. I just feel it needs to be redesigned. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for that.
Chairman, if I may, and to an extent I'm repeating what Elizabeth Sims said a few minutes ago, the comments made by the councillor are issues which aren't relevant to this planning application, they're internal matters, really commenting on the operational uses which may take place in the building if it's approved. So councillor Holder has made those points, but they're certainly not points, in my view, which are relevant to your assessment of the planning merits of the planning application. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Matthew. I'd just come back again to the Gostrey management and trustees who have been working closely with this all the way through. Just a thought, the Gostrey Centre currently has something like four hundred and fifty-five square metres. The Memorial Hall under this proposal would have eleven hundred square metres, quite a difference. Councillor Hess.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to say that whilst I haven't always voted in agreement with the officers, during the years I've been a member of this council, I have come to be extremely grateful to the officers and by and large to trust their thorough and well-researched guidance delivered to the officers. With regard to this application, therefore, I want to divide the functionality of the hall as expressed in the proposal, which seems to me to be very impressive, and on that scale or on that heading I've got absolutely no concerns at all. My regret is the way the thing looks, and looking at the external diagram, I can really think of an example of a building that is quite so, looks so muddled and confused. So in terms of the functionality, I think this is good to go, but in terms of the way it looks, I regret hugely being asked to sign off against something that just looks that inharmonious, to use a term that we heard earlier, and generally such a mess. Help.
Councillor McCullough.
Do you mean councillor MacLeod, chairman?
No problem. I do beg your pardon, I was reading from a list here. Councillor MacLeod, apologies.
No problem at all, chairman. I think there's two issues before the committee this evening. One is, should this project happen at all? And secondly, is it an attractive and well-thought-out solution to provide a multi-use building in Farnham based on the Memorial Hall, including the Gostrey Centre? In terms of the first point, I'm tempted to say no, because in my view, this has been done for the wrong reason, it's been done to facilitate the Brightwell's development by moving the Gostrey Centre out of that. But more importantly than that is the point that the chairman of the Gostrey Centre, and I believe the trustees, support it. So that overrides that, in my opinion, so if this proves to be an attractive and well-thought-out solution, I would actually support it. But like other councillors who have spoken, I think, I'm not a designer, I'm not an architect, but just looking at it, I think it's an extremely ugly building. I know what I like, and it's just ugly. It doesn't even seem to me to be an extension. It seems to me to be two buildings, side by side, entirely different, connected by a corridor of different styles. And a member of the public sent all members of the committee a very well-thought-out gentleman called David Howell objection, and in that objection he actually quoted the Farnham Design Statement, where it says, "The extension should be carefully considered to reflect the style of the original dwelling and avoid having an adverse effect on the street scene." This is the exact opposite of that. So the Memorial Hall isn't actually a wonderfully attractive building, that is true, it's about run down, it does need improvement and enhancement, and that would be welcome, but this particular proposal doesn't improve it, it does the exact opposite. It's sadly really a missed opportunity, actually. Two styles, architectural styles can coexist, it happens elsewhere in Farnham. At the Maltings, there's a very attractive, modern entrance to what was an old building. It can be designed to look nice, but this just isn't it. It's a very big disappointment. It seems like a cheap solution to the problem, and Farnham deserves a great deal better. I would recommend to Wavely that they should do what the Wollmied people did, they actually are proposing a completely new Wollmied, and people supported the concept of this, but when they came up with their architectural design, it was widely disliked in Farnham. They went away, took all the comments into account, came back with a new design, and there's now a lot of enthusiasm. And Wavely could do exactly that, and I don't think it matters whether this is approved tonight or not approved, I would recommend to Wavely they go away and think again. The second point is actually, does this work as a multi-use building? I'm not a building designer, but I am a computer, I was by profession an IT person, I did a great deal of computer design. And another important thing about design is to actually do a great deal of thinking at the beginning about how something's going to work, how the various things are going to interact with each other, and it's very clear that it hasn't actually happened in this occasion. There should have been some kind of document produced, and it should have been extensively discussed, and how these various uses were going to interact with each other. I've spoken to Michael Blower, who's a highly respected architect in Farnham, and asked his opinion, because his opinions are more valuable than mine. He's looked very carefully at it, and he said it won't actually work, and several members of the public have actually looked at it and come up with similar comments. It seems like a dog's breakfast solution. I don't want to be negative, I would like to actually see this work. My recommendation is simply that Wavely goes away, thinks again, comes up with a proper solution to it, and then we can all support it. And I would very much ask fellow councillors to look very carefully at what they're proving tonight. I don't really mind whether they approve it or not, as long as it's carefully rethought, and that is really what is absolutely necessary. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank councillor MacLeod, and councillor Adams.
Thank you, chairman. Two things really. One, actually, is a question. On this particular slide, the building looks extremely white, but when we were shown the materials, the indication was that the material would actually be a very similar colour to the Memorial Hall itself, which would mean that it wouldn't stand out in the same way that it is and be so aggressive. So is that the case? That's the question. Now, secondly, I've heard a lot of people tonight talking about the internal operation of this place. I don't think we're qualified to talk about that. The Gostrey Centre and the other members of the NHS who are interested in making sure that this works have studied this for quite some time and are satisfied with the internal design. So I don't really think that we are in any way capable of making comments about it tonight. Thank you.
Thank councillor. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As has already been said, it's not our job to work out whether this will work or not, but it's comforting to know that the trustees of the Gostrey Centre and so on have been involved. We're also not concerned about the business plan of the operation of the new users, that is not of our concern. I'm satisfied that the technical matters that are on our report are well argued and are correct, and it really does come down to the design. And it could be said that I'm a rather conservative with a small C when it comes to buildings, but actually, I think firstly, there is improvements to the old Memorial Hall with the pitched roofs on the front, which people haven't mentioned, which is part of this planning application, which is going to improve the old hall. And I know it's an accepted practice, that if you're putting on an extension, particularly an extension of this size, that to try and mock up what's there already and so on is, generally speaking, not a good idea, and that putting something which is clearly modern and is clearly twenty-first century, adjacent to an old building, does make it very clear what historically is old and what historically is the new. And at the end of the day, the design is in the eye of the beholder, and I think it's actually quite a refreshing and interesting design, and therefore, unless I hear anything to dissuade me otherwise, I think this is an acceptable application. Thank you.
Thank councillor Goodrich. Councillor Muller.
I might take a very similar line. The three issues on which we have to exercise judgement, basically, parking and residential amenity haven't been discussed at all, and I don't think raise any big issues, but the visual amenity is certainly important. And I have a question which I don't know whether the officers can answer, which is how well will this building be kept clean? And I refer in particular to the glass aspect. And I refer in particular to the glass aspect because I think visual amenity can include the future look of it. The one thing that concerns me is if this building were to become shabby in appearance quite, quite quickly or would need an awful lot of glass cleaning to keep it looking, looking smart. In particular, if you're relying on an extensive area of glass to emit natural daylight into the interior, you don't want it getting mildewed and needing to be cleaned every, every week or so. So does anyone know the answer to that aspect of it?
If I may just very briefly on the issue of future maintenance, that's not something we can easily control through the planning process but I think we can take a fair amount of confidence that this is a building which will be owned and managed by, by the Borough Council and I think we could have every confidence that they'll want to look after it properly to make sure that it's attractive to users and also reflects well on the Borough Council.
Thank you. I think on that basis, I'm not sure that my personal reaction to the design is desperately relevant, this will be looked at by many thousands of people and we have no means of asking them what their, their views are. I'd rather share the view that if you are adding to an old building, you want to be distinctive and this is certainly that. I can understand very well why other colleagues don't like it, all I can say is I've seen a lot worse and you get used, used to it to an awful lot of things. So unless I hear something dramatic, I shall be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Mullin. councillor Adams.
Thank you Chairman. As resident of Cranley, I'm rather hesitant speaking about an application in Farnham. However, I do know the Gostrey Centre and I do know the Memorial Hall. My experience of the Gostrey Centre is some twelve years old and whilst I know the facilities there provide excellent services, I think the building is probably about the same vintage as the Memorial Hall as well. I've looked at the Memorial Hall on a number of occasions and whilst we heard earlier, it has a neoclassical frontage. I think the attractiveness of that building really disappeared with the flat-roofed extensions on either side in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy. In an ideal world, to provide a new community centre with a day centre as well, we would have probably knocked the building down and started again but that, aside from the total cost of it all, would have removed these community facilities from Farnham for probably at least two years and possibly more. It's unfortunate I suppose that the pictures of the extension there, and Mr Adams referred to it, in fact the fibre, fibre cement cladding is not brilliant white as is shown there, it is according to my agenda, a matte linen colour which would cause it to blend in a lot better than it does. In my view, given that this is a fairly aging building now with those flat-roofed extensions, I believe that aside from the putting those sloping roofs on, this new addition actually makes it very, very interesting. As regards the Farnham Design Statement, it doesn't seem to contradict too much in that particular area as well. I've heard criticism of the facilities but there's what you've all, we've already been told, we are just looking at this building as a planning application and not what is to be provided inside it. And I'm absolutely certain, given they've been involved from the start, that the management and trustees of the Gostrey Centre will ensure that all of the facilities that are currently available from the Gostrey Centre where it is at the moment will certainly be available from this building as well and I'm no doubt that they will be even better. I like that design, I think it's unusual, it makes something of what is otherwise a relatively nondescript building but it also provided, provides a great deal of new facilities in a compact building for the people of Farnham and I fully support the officer's recommendation. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you councillor Lewis. councillor Balm.
Thank you Chairman, well I listened with great interest with all the comments about these, particularly about the number of people who've talked about and indeed some of the people who have written in, in criticism of the system, it's not in the town centre. We have five centres in the, five day centres within the borough, well this is the fifth. The Clock House which is in Milford which is a village and supports a whole range of people from a range of areas, a lot of villages etcetera and probably some people who come out from Godleming as well. Hazelway is in Way Hill, it's not in, in the middle of Hazelway, it's on the edge. It's a totally different town really, if you look to the online, look to where the shopping centres are, Way Hill is a different centre and not in any way judged or compared with, with Hazelway, so that is totally different. Farncombe is in a very old building which has been converted and is, and is extremely successful. Cranley has gone through its ups and downs but generally a relatively modern building and it works well. All of them are different, all of them are different management styles and they're all welcoming to people from outside of their area. Is Farnham saying or the people who are protesting about it, they don't want anybody there but the people who live within the centre of Farnham, who can perhaps walk there? I think not. Would I be welcome at some stage if I was able to drive there? This centre will provide somewhere where people if they are still able to, will be able to drive there and, and either enjoy the facilities or indeed be one of the helpers. So I think in many ways it's extremely positive to be outside, just outside the town, it is only just outside the centre of town and I think I'm extremely impressed with it. councillor Lewis just brought up a point which reminded me that the ugliness of the hall itself in its present form was created in sixty-nine and seventy by the extensions on the edge and that was up to Farnham, whatever it was called, Rural District Council or whatever, nothing to do with Waverley.
Thank you councillor Balm. councillor Mary Forresky.
Thank you Chairman. You'll be pleased to know that I'm going to be very, very brief. councillor Goodrich did say that beauty is in the eye of beholder and I absolutely agree with that and I apologise to some of my Farnham colleagues on this one but I actually think it's great, I really, really do like it, I think it shows great creativity. One of the things it slightly reminds me of is when we looked at an application for the Health Centre in Cranley some years ago, a very modern creative building came forward, was built and against great opposition and then went on to win award after award after award for its creative and innovative design and I hope the same happens with this because it truly is very, very different, so I would support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor. Are there any other? councillor Upton.
Mr Chairman, I saw that hall for the first time on our site visit and I thought it looked a very tired and well-worn building. My only observation is I admire the new design, it's a shame that we couldn't have extended it to go over the entire site, so I support the application.
Thank you councillor Upton. I think that's it. Matthew Evans?
Chairman, I was just going to make a few more comments on, on the design reflecting on the fact that it, that it is unashamedly contemporary but that isn't a bad thing and I think in this instance, I think it's a good thing. And just to reassure members in the, in the development of the, the design, the architects have worked very closely with, with the planning team here including the open design officer but I think more importantly, that that design has been evolved and developed in partnership with the, the future users of, of the site and it reflects their, their needs and aspirations and I think that is an important matter for, for members to take into account. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, if there is no one else to speak, I think we move now to the recommendation. The recommendation is permission be granted subject to conditions one to thirteen and informative one set out on pages thirty-two to thirty-six of the agenda. Can I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant? Please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Could you just put your hand up? Sixteen, seventeen.
Those against? Please show.
One, two, three, four.
Abstentions? Abstentions?
One, that's one.
Thank you very much indeed. Therefore, permission is granted. Thank you all very much indeed.